It's a pretty good direction and it also has some areas that aren't necessarily spelled out. So, we have indicated as a fund manager in the past that if we were to make a decision, if the county legislative body was to make their decision by example on the 2017 list in 2018, as if we were very careful to articulate that we were prioritizing the 2017 list. We believe the legislature would likely not have a significant problem with that. We haven't tested it. As an attorney would say, there's no case law, it hasn't been tested in court. That's our interpretation to be as flexible and user-friendly as we can and stick with our interpretation of the intent of the statute. Intent's a scary word, but I can say that as long as we don't get sued, so. Mr. Crockett?
This is probably going to be the most frustrating attorney answer you'll get today. I can't render an opinion on a statute I haven't read.
It's just not today, Chris. It's the one that's always frustrating.
Do we have a habit of doing that? What I would recommend is, did you work with Mr. Erickson on this?
Well, here's Mr. Wilson, now Mr. Erickson, and so, yes.
So what I would recommend is if one of them have recently worked on this, we could have them come down, or if you want to table it, our office can render an opinion on what's being proposed and how if it falls within the requirements of the statute. But right now, I just don't have that information.
I don't know if we want to table it. I think I want to give resolution to the mayors knowing where their projects are, and I think we're committed to those projects. I think, well, Commissioner Harvey, and again, I'm working my head around this, I think he wants just some flexibility to leverage those dollars. And the reality of it is, and we haven't really talked about it, but the, you know, the issue is UTA's level of funding specific to this project, and are they willing to come closer to the table and help provide more funding? And I think we've had some general discussion with them, and I think they will, but if we don't allow them the avenue through adopting this as it is presently constituted, then I think we somewhat defeat that opportunity. Am I incorrect in this?
I would, using your word, I would interpret that this list that the BRT request is the one component on that list that has been tabled. So, it's important, in my opinion, that you approve the list this year with that contingency being resolved later on the one item. That would be my interpretation.
I think the Commissioner Harvey's concern that I think he brought up is that this may, this opportunity for these federal dollars may dissipate in nine months, and then we will not have that opportunity for those to leverage 60 million with 20 or 80 with 10.
I understood Commissioner Harvey's contingency that would need to be resolved within nine months, if it's not those two. Mr. Gibson?
The nine-month thing is a stab, I think, at when an application would go into the Federal Transportation Administration, if I understand that right. So, it's not necessarily that there's a nine-month clock or anything else, other than we think that by the end of the year, the Transportation Commission would make a, would ask for those applications. It is interesting to me that it coincides fairly closely with when we usually pass our transportation list, which is the October-November timeframe. We're a little late this year. And so, that was one of the reasons why it was comfortable not programming money in there, but holding, basically holding a spot, as the mayors decided in the meeting. We haven't moved any projects up to address, you know, into those spots to use that money. We've basically left that, those holes available to program some money if we felt like we were in that predicament and weren't going to get the type of participation from UTA that we wanted. In fact, it leaves a funding source for the entire maximum request of the $6 million. Is that, that's not the maximum request, but that assumes FTC or FTA funding of 65%, is that right, Douglas?
Six million, that assumes federal.
And six million. So, that's one of the areas where we think we're going to be, hoping that UTA then would come up with a portion of that. To me, the timing is pretty well perfect, because that allows us a year to figure out how this is all going to shake out, to negotiate partners. And the interesting part that I think, well, I think that I'm going to, I'm just going to say it, frankly, I'm discouraged by the motion, because the whole idea of we're going to approve a list and do just what the mayor said, and then say, except for, we're going to take another project and we're going to put some kind of a two-year, we're going to have some data, some undisclosed data that we don't know anything about, and what we want, what we say we want, we just want some more data, and within, and it's going to happen two years before the project starts. Let me just make it clear, from my perspective here, I think it is inappropriate and unfortunate that we would pit two important projects against each other, and that's what is happening here. We have tremendous, the insinuation was made in the COG meeting as well, and it's been re-insinuated here, that there has, that there's somehow some data that we need or something different on this 12th Street project. And the bottom line is, if we have been talking about 12th Street for seven years, we built half of it, we've got a tremendous investment in the ground on the first portion on Phase One, and any delay in finishing that inhibits us and holds us back from receiving a return on investment on that money that we've already put into it. And so, from a county perspective, as we know from the discussion earlier today, I won't be here to see some of this through, but from a county perspective, we would be making a mistake to wait to finish that second project, that second part of the project till 2022. It would be wise for this county and this community to bond, knowing that there's a repayment source programmed after 2022, and to move this project forward so that we can get the appropriate economic growth that we have already invested millions of dollars in Phase One, and to do that. If we are saying that we're going to wait till 2022 and then get some information and then get two, and then have two more years after that, or whenever, whatever, it's a mistake. And I just, I can't say it any more forcefully than to say, I don't believe that's what the mayors intended. I believe that there would have actually been a fairly close to unanimous vote had that project been moved up in the priority list to fill in some of that additional money that we're not spending today on the UTA project. And so, you know, that's my perception, but I think it's, I think it's wrong to say that those mayors and that COG would be okay with us putting additional restrictions on a project, because there's no need to. They evaluated it thoroughly, there's room for both. The only reason that the UTA project has been held to this point has been because we're trying to bring partners to the table. That's the only reason. It's not because it's not a priority, and we have the ability to do that in October-November of next year. And so, frankly, had I known that this type of a motion would be coming forward, I would have tried to negotiate to have this on an agenda next week or the week after, so that we could meet our December deadline. But unfortunately, it's a little bit of a shock and a surprise, again, that it seems like there is some intent to delay a project here that frankly, if we don't have the answers on now, I don't know that we're going to get them, because we've talked about this to the point that I am blue in the face. I mean, it's been seven years that we've talked about this project. I would like to see the commission move forward with the list as presented by the mayors in the COG meeting. I think that is the safe bet, having had the vetting. I mean, here I'm asked to, I'm asked to vote on a motion, I don't even know, I don't even know what the motion is, really, to begin with, but somehow that we're going to get some undisclosed, unknown information that I just, it's crazy. And I can't, I mean, I'd vote against the whole list, unfortunately. That won't matter, but unfortunately, to do that, I think throws into question and into turmoil the entire painstaking six-month process or year-long process, frankly, Brooke, thank you, and Doug, of putting together these recommendations and these priorities in the form that they are in. So, I apologize to those who have not engaged in that process thoroughly to this point and don't have the question answered, but if there are questions, let's pull this back, discuss it some more, and try to get to a point where we can vote on the list as the mayors have presented it. That's my suggestion. And I also would like to hear, since I do see that Mayor Taylor is in the room as our UTA representative, I think it's important that he addresses this issue from a mass transit perspective, since there is connection between the BRT project and the rest of the list.
Hold on. May I interject in there, Chair Eber?
Yes, please go ahead.
So, let me be perfectly clear. There is no, there is, and Carrie, I must have miscommunicated somewhere. I have no reservation on moving the list that the mayors presented forward. It is not attached to any kind of a deal or caveat or anything like that. I am okay with moving the list that was presented by the COG forward. My question is, is because of the statute, we, according to what I've learned from the officials, the working officials at UTA, and what I've learned from the WFRC, the application for that would have to be turned in in June or July. The August deadline, there's an August deadline for the application for the federal government. Our application locally would have to be turned in by June or July. So, that's the reason for the nine months. It's not, hey, I'll approve the list if you do BRT. That has absolutely nothing at all to do with it, nor is the BRT associated in any way with my questions on West 12th Street. None of the three are related at all. I just want to be perfectly clear. I'm, again, for another time, I'm good with moving the recommendation from the mayors forward. My only question is, is we've spent a tremendous amount of funds already on 12th Street. I would like to see some data that supports the future growth. I've not yet seen any data or any plans on what West 12th Street would look like moving forward. All I'm trying to do is have a little responsibility before we let out another $10 million of community transportation funds out west. And I'm asking that we just have it two years before the project moves forward. That's all. And so, that gives us another two years to get that. I'm not, it's not anything magic. I just would like to see some plans, just some, just some simple plans. It's not personal, has nothing to do with, but we have, as county citizens, expended a lot of money already, and I'd like that before we spend another $10 million, just like to see some plans. Is West 12th Street a condition with BRT? No. Is either one of them a condition with moving the rest of the list forward with the mayors? No. Is even the, I'm for moving the whole list forward. I'm just saying, before we program 2020, 2022, that we just have a little more information, like we have great information on all of the other projects, on every single one of the other projects except for that one. So, we haven't done our job here as a local commission. We haven't done our job as a county, because I haven't seen anything. And this just might be you, this might be me. Carrie, you may have seen the plan. James, you may have seen the plan. I haven't seen the plan. And so, that's why I put forth, that's why I put forth the recommendation and the approval for this, but I would like to be informed. And that's it. And so, that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Hold on, no, hold on. The initial question, we've got to get to the first question before we can go round and round for 45 minutes, but we've got to understand the motion that's been made.
Good luck.
Is that motion a viable motion to have a placeholder for BRT for the 2017, once we get the recommendation back or the comment back from UTA on matching funds? Is there the ability, is there an avenue to provide that in this recommendation? Because if there isn't, then there's no reason to have any more of this discussion. If there is, then we can continue the discussion.
I think the best way for me to respond to that, absent our process, and as far as I know, other processes not having gone through this specific motion or a very similar motion, at the end of the day, it's up to you. As we understand it from our Metropolitan Planning Organization, as we, when I say "we," all of the cities and the county, make decisions on how this money may be spent on transportation projects, there are a few requirements, like the project must be on the regional transportation plan, we must have an annual application process, there's an indication of a list per year. It doesn't, the code doesn't anticipate an unanswered question on the list.
Well, again, I think, I think the question that Commissioner Harvey is asking is, Mayor Taylor has made a very strong recommendation to UTA to have a larger local match than they're presently willing to give. And they are now in that process of doing those discussions. And I think what I am hearing that he is saying is if they come closer to the table, if we, if we haven't allowed the opportunity then for the COG then to bring this back up and have that discussion, then we lose out on the opportunity for the application. I think that's what I'm hearing him say. So, is there another avenue that will still allow for UTA to come back to the table, have discussions, if the COG members feel more comfortable at that point on approving a local match from the COG? Have we taken that out of the ability to have that conversation and then to move this project forward? Or is there a way we can build that into this recommendation? Because again, this is separate from 12th Street, and it's separate from all of the other projects on here. So, is there a way to do that within this?
I think there are two ways to do it. Commissioner, Chair Eber, if I may interrupt you. We've talked about having, and my, this is my opinion, one of, one of, let's just take the name off of it. A project on the list has been tabled until something is resolved. It's important that we, that the county commission approve the list, because there are other projects on the list that need to move forward.
I agree.
So, I believe, in my personal opinion, that it's okay to have one of the projects on the list tabled and resolved at a later date. The other method-
Within this year.
I don't know that that necessarily has to be defined.
Well, no, I'm not saying if necessarily. What I'm saying is that does it give us the capacity to bring a project back in front of the COG and answer the specific questions and meet the required match that was asked, and then to move that project forward?
Yes, I believe so, based on the recommendations we've gotten from the MPO tied back to, it's up to all of you. The other part of that, and I think, I think Commissioner Gibson was maybe kind of alluding to this. The other part of it is the fact that the 2018 process, right, so we're not going to, so we have an ending cash balance. You're going to approve $19 million, and some of it we're not going to spend for a few years, right? That's going to sit static until next year, right? And so, we've got this fund balance that's going to sit there, because there's no annual application process that starts until next June, okay? And so, any project, including the one that's tabled, and that's my word, can come back next June, and there's nothing in our, in the current process that prohibits the COG and the county legislative body from making a decision prior to December of 2018. That's just typically how we've done it. So, I'm suggesting that there's, there will be funds available to finalize a decision, whether it's the BRT project or some other project, that's not going to be taken away, because this is it. Did I articulate that?
Yeah, I guess if I can just give you a scenario, say within the next three weeks, UTA comes back and they, they say on the local match, they're willing to fund 90% of it, and they would like the COG to help them with the last 10%, say it's $250,000. If we adopt this recommendation, is there leeway within the process for this to come back to the COG, for the mayors to then to review this? The appropriateness of the project is $250,000 reasonable match from our local COG, and then approve a $250,000 match and start the process of application?
And I appreciate your patience. And again, we're absent experience, right? So, we're setting the experience for this, which is actually kind of cool in a weird way. But I'm going to go back to, it's up to you, because the statute says the county legislative body finishes the decision. So, you can finish the decision, I think, as you see fit. And if, if part of your decision is to tie the COG back into it, that, to me, is up to you.
Well, I think, I think, yeah. I think the COG is the decision, and that's what I don't want to feel like we've eliminated, is the ability to come back to the COG. I was not at the meeting, but from what I hear, there were a lot of questions. I would like the opportunity to go back to the COG, get those questions answered, and then get a final decision on the BRT, specific to the level of funding and the need for the project. I don't want to statutorily adopt something that for six, eight months or a year does not allow us then to revisit that. And that's what I think I'm hearing from his motion that he's trying to eliminate. So, if you feel comfortable, maybe Commissioner Harvey can talk specifically to the BRT, maybe he can rescind that portion of his motion, if there's still flexibility, even if we adopt it as it stands.
If you feel comfortable, maybe Commissioner Harvey can talk specifically to the BRT, rescind that portion of his motion, if there's still flexibility. And I'm happy to, I want to be on record to say, I'm happy to move forward. If I can make, as long as we can revisit this again in May or June again, in case we, we as a community have the opportunity to revisit the BRT, I'm fine with moving forward with it now. And if, and if I saw the drawings and plans and everything else like I did on every other project, and around the town, like if I saw that for 12th Street, I'd be good with moving that forward now. I'm just, I'm not, you can blame it all on me. I'm just not prepared with those two things, and the UTA is not prepared, because every mayor in the COG said that they were all supportive of that augment BRT, providing they had a little more information from UTA. They felt it was important for UTA. I just don't want to make a decision today that ties our hands, and so we can't come back until September, October, November, when it's then too late, because our application's due in June, according to the expert in this field.
So, I feel comfortable at this point, Commissioner Harvey, that those questions have been answered, that Douglas reaffirms that we can revisit this information to the COG, get those questions answered, and then make that final determination based upon all the available information. And then the rest, I believe, of your motion probably had more to do with our local transportation office working with you to answer those questions on the 12th Street project. So, are you comfortable just moving forward with a motion to adopt the recommendation as made?
Is that a question to me?
That is a question to you, Commissioner.
So, so, I'm not sure that I understand the question. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Your motion dealt with a concern that the COG could not revisit the BRT to answer the specific questions in the timeframe of the application for the federal match to move the BRT project forward. Douglas, Mr. Larson, has addressed that, saying that you can readdress it to the COG to get that decision, even if we adopt the resolution, or excuse me, the recommendations as made. I believe-
Absolutely. I want to support them. I do want to support the mayors on this, on this COG list and move it forward right away. And if we can bring it forward again, in the event that UTA comes forward with something and the BRT can't, I just don't want to, I don't want to paint ourselves into a corner. And so, that's, that's it. And if we had some more, if I had more information, I'd be good on the 12th Street. I stand, I stand in support of West 12th Street. It's just, I just would like to see more information before moving forward. So, I apologize to that whole body that's there that I miscommunicated originally, but I did my best with just oral language to try to get that moving the best I could.
Commissioner Harvey, are you willing to rescind your initial motion and make a motion to adopt the recommendations as listed then?
With that understanding, I will withdraw my, I will withdraw my original motion and make a motion that we adopt the transportation recommendation as given by our mayors at CAG.
I have a motion-
With the understanding, just with the understanding that we can come back again and have more information by May or June. I'm doing that with that understanding.
Have more information on what? Because that was my concern with the original motion, is what kind of information?
I think, oh, that's great. We'll have more information from the BRT and UTA, period. Not associated with anything else. Secondly, that I will have seen some of the drawings and some of the plan, the plan for Western Weaver County regarding future growth, zoning and everything else for out west.
Commissioner Harvey, can we have that 12th Street planning portion, maybe a separate internal administrative review rather than part of the motion?
Absolutely. Again, I am in support of West 12th Street.
Okay. So, I have a motion on the floor right now to adopt the recommendations for the local transportation fund through the COG. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any need for any further discussion on just the simple adopting of the recommendations? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Taylor, Commissioner Gibson invited you to come up. Is there something you'd like to add to this discussion, just in the general context? You're welcome to do so, sir. Or any other mayors that would like to spend some time talking about the recommendations?
I'd love to hear from them all, but I specifically asked for Mayor Taylor because of his representation of us on the UTA board, and thinking that he might have some advice, as he did share some with us in our COG meeting. Thanks for coming up, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of quick comments. I'm really happy with where the commission's headed on this. I had a nice meeting yesterday with Commissioner or Chairman Eber about it, and I'm happy with where I'm seeing the county going on the BRT. The BRT is important. I think Commissioner Harvey is right when he stressed that all of us who made comments in the meeting said, we like the project, we support the project, we believe it's important for economic growth in the county. There's just a lot of concerns about using the transportation funds from the county to pay for this project, especially when our county is one of only two of the urban counties along the Wasatch Front that passed Prop 1. And you already have the letter I sent previously to the Transportation Committee, but I'll just share a couple of quick things for the record on that. Our county and- Our county and Davis Counties are the only two of the Wasatch Front urban counties that pass Proposition 1, which grants forty percent of that tax is going to the UTA. Forty percent of the new tax that went on to the citizens of our county, and that's almost four million dollars a year. It's gonna produce almost a hundred million, or, excuse me, over a hundred million dollars, conservative estimates, over a hundred million dollars in revenues for UTA in the next twenty years. And we think that's how this project should be paid for, is with the Proposition 1 funding that our citizens passed and that is now flowing to the UTA. If there was not Prop 1, I, I think, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but I think many of the mayors would feel differently about using our local transit funds. But there is Prop 1, and that's where UTA needs to be funding this project from. It's the most important transit project in the county that's gonna happen in the future, that BRT, and it's, it's exactly why Prop 1 was passed in this county, or the citizens of Weaver County passed Prop 1 for important projects like this. And we'd just like to see that be the focus for paying for this BRT project, instead of asking the citizens of this county who already approved Prop 1 for UTA to then also take money away from transit projects that are so important to all the cities in this county, take money out of that fund to pay for a, away from roads to pay for a transit project. So that's what I've been reinforcing to the UTA. I'm glad that the commission is also sending that message, because the money's there with Prop 1, and I think if we just work with UTA, we'll be able to get them to put a larger amount from those Prop 1 funds to this project.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I just make a follow-up, Mayor, before you leave? You may need to verify some of this information, but I think it's important to note, since we're on the record, that UTA funded completely the Provo-Orem BRT line. Provo, or, sorry, excuse me, I believe it was Utah County actually voted for, voted to bond for that project, and so they took, took the bonding responsibility, but to be paid back one hundred percent, correct, from UTA funds? And that was from general UTA operating funds, not from additional funds that were generated through Prop 1. So here we have a circumstance where we are not only not being treated the same as Provo, the Provo-Orem BRT line, but we are, we have additionally gone out and passed an additional funding source, Prop 1, that generates four million dollars. Is that the right number?
It's currently just under four million and then projected to grow.
Okay, so approximately four million dollars a year additional from our taxpayers, and we can't get them to come to the table and say, okay, we'll even use, we'll use that money that you just send us. I, I'm kinda baffled by that. I, why the difference? And, and I understand their answer to me has been, well, we made a bad deal in Utah County, we're not gonna make two bad deals. But by the same token, our taxpayers are being punished. Am I, am I looking at it wrong?
You've quoted a number of things from my letter, Commissioner, and, and you are correct on the facts. Utah County Council of Governments did not contribute any funds towards the BRT project that's currently being built in Utah County. The county commission did bond for seventy-five million dollars, which is the local match, or most of the local match, and did make that contribution. That bond is being repaid by the UTA a hundred percent, including interest. Then the local cities did make some contributions of property and right-of-way, some things like that, but the council of governments did not, was not asked to make any contribution. And so in that, it is a very different scenario that we are experiencing, and we, citizens in Weaver County, pay a higher tax rate to UTA per capita and a higher percent tax rate to UTA, and that's one of the reasons that I've felt that we should be able to get this project funded by UTA, because we're paying a higher rate, and we, here in Weaver County, passed Prop 1, so there's a source of revenue for UTA to be able to pay for this project without needing to dip into the general UTA budget. So yes, you are correct on that as well.
So just to be clear, it's not that we then are asking even for the same deal as Provo-Orem. We additionally went out and proactively sent them an addition, an additional four million dollars a year. And we're saying, can we have some priority in determining where those, where those dollars go? We, we may not want them to go into some dark hole that we don't know. We want them to go into this project. Can you make that happen? And the answer has still been no.
That's the request, and what I've asked from the UTA, is that they Prop 1 funds from Weaver County taxpayers be the source of revenue to pay for the Ogden-BRT project, because it's a massive transit project in our county. Our citizens are paying those new taxes. It just makes sense that that would be used to pay for the project.
So the mayors need to understand this, because today we have, because this is all about the BRT project and how much money we're going to pay for it. And today, there's another larger dollar project on our list, and it's 12th Street, and so that allows us to beat on 12th Street. But tomorrow, Mayor Taylor, with all due respect, it's gonna be your project in North Ogden, right? Or Mayor Searle's project in, in Riverdale. If we allow, um, a, UTA to get out of this without paying for part of, for at least a significant portion of this BRT project, it takes money directly from our ability in this COG, as I talked about before, with the lack of funding source, the lack of enough money to stretch. It, 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 it forces us to withdraw from other projects that are important, either one that's on the list that's fairly big today, or one that won't be on the list tomorrow because, because there's no money to do that. And so, we just, I hate to...
Well, that's why I appreciated in Commissioner Harvey's motion that he said he wanted to make sure to take it back to the COG. And I appreciate that, because that's why it's so important. There's a limited resource, there's tons of projects to be done, road projects in our county, there's a lot of concern about doing a transit project, so that's why it's come up, and I appreciate that the commission will continue to get input from the COG on it.
Thank you.
And to the mayors, to mayors that are here on any particular project, I, I don't sense that there's a, a desire for, for more information, but please let me know if there is, if there's information that you desire. As for the commission, we'll, we'll talk with our Economic Development Office and try to obtain the information that Commissioner Harvey desires, so.
Mayor Truitt, are you interested in making any comments? I thought, I saw you nod your head. And Mayor Searle, if you're interested, you're welcome to come up. We'd love to hear from you, sir.
I just wanted to say that the BRT project is very important to, to the COG. I was at the meeting, and I think it was the funding mechanism that we questioned.
Yes, sir.
And I think that we're pretty much all in favor of the BRT project, and we understand how important it is. But I think that was, tabling it was the right thing to do till we could get more information, based on making sure that everybody can pony up and, and pay for this project. Hate to see this come out of the funds, other funds, when it should be funded by Prop 1. That's just my, my...
Thank you. Would you like to talk about your amazing project that you now have on the list?
Well, thank you very much. It's actually the first time we've, we've actually approached you guys for, for funding. It's very important because it's a safety concern for us, more than anything. So having people transition from 166, or the Highway 39, 166, coming into Huntsville Town, you know, safely is very important to us. So thank you very much for the approval.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
I think it's one of the most important projects on the list, even if it has the smallest dollar amount, I, it's a good one.
Mayor Searle, were you interested, sir? You'll hear when he walks, ka-ching, 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 because he has all those sales tax dollars in Riverdale.
We gave them all to UTA. I'll only take a minute, this has gone on long. I'd just like to emphasize a couple of things. One, I fully agree with Mayor Taylor and Mayor Truitt, what was discussed, a hundred percent in favor of, of what's being done here today. The one, one thing I think's important, Major Searle, is that I think it's really important we move forward on this BRT as far as working with UTA, trying to get them to come to the table. I think time is of the essence. I don't think you can afford to wait nine months or six months. I think we need to get them there and, and find out what they're gonna do, because that money's gonna go away. Sounds like the current administration is even going to maybe take the funding away in the future. And from what we know with other states in the West, there's a big demand for that money. There's thirty-nine million dollars if they fund nine, sixty-five percent. It's important we get that. One other example of maybe the unfairness that we're getting from UTA is, we're told they put a new tracks line out to the airport. That's in Salt Lake County. It's a hundred percent funded by UTA's general funds. Salt Lake County was also a county that didn't support Prop 1, so I think that's important. You see both these examples, the BRT and Orem-Provo area, and this tracks line, and, you know, we've got our own funding mechanism, they turn around and don't even talk to us, so that's really a disappointment, I think. They are making it, we've got appointments with, got people coming up to talk to us, but I, I think it's important we make that BRT thing happen too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Just a quick response for me. I, I want to make sure that we have an understanding, that we have been in dialogue with UTA for the past probably seven to ten days. I feel very strongly that they are great partners. We, as a community, I think in the North Region, has been very vocal about the UTA and the governance model. I think mistakes were made in that old governance model that they do not want to make again. And we can rehash over and over those mistakes, and we can hold them up as the indicators of the lack of equity, but I don't think we want them to make the same mistakes. Utah County has leveraged the next twenty to twenty-five years of expansion because of the agreement that they made. There's no more capacity for them to continue building projects, because UTA will be paying back that bond. This is a multi-phase project that will run basically from Twenty-third up to IHC and then eventually down Fortieth Street, and have connectivity in the third phase, hopefully from North Ogden, all the way through the terrace into Riverdale to Roy and back. So this is a multi-phase project. I would hate to leverage the second phase and the third phase for today's argument, based upon a model that they have self-admitted was a mistake, and it was a mistake because of the governance model they had. The decisions, I think, that we've talked about were decisions that were made three to five to seven years ago. And is, and we, I think, as a responsible community, we don't want to revisit those. And so we can hold them up as the inequity, and there is inequity. Or we can come together, which I think we are as a COG for sure, and as a united voice, say there's value in this project. I believe UTA is coming to the table and, and wants to be at the table, and I believe it'll be a very positive resolution. That's why I'm encouraged with the direction that we're taking with this motion, and the revisit to the COG with all the justification, the dollar match, and then hopefully a commitment to the second and third phase, which will really create the connectivity in our community that we have to have, I think is extremely important. I do not want to demonize UTA for mistakes of the past. That does not make partners that wanna work with us, and we have to be forward-thinking as a community, because we're in catch-up mode, let's just be honest. And so that's why I'm encouraged by all of the comments by the mayors, that's why I'm encouraged about the work being done by Mrs. Stewart and Mr. Larson, and I see a great future with mass transit in our community, because we are working together. So thank you very much for all the work that's been done. Now is the time set aside for any public comment. I would encourage anyone that has some comments to please come up to the mic. Please tell us your name and what city you live in.
Lori Brinkerhoff, 6205 West, 4700 South. I'm just gonna comment of the last items, just because it applies to me somewhat in Hooper City. I just want to reiterate my support, your great thoughtful analysis of these transportation projects. I did sit through the WACOG meeting, the very long meeting. My stomach was growling then, it is growling right now, so I'll keep this very limited. But obviously, there's been great analysis. I want to speak to one of the projects. Just to give you, we've talked about 12th Street, we talked about the BRT, but just to let you know about the Hooper City, this has been my project for three years. I'm just going to comment very briefly on the impact that this has on a community. We have applied for these funds three times, it's a safe transportation route, and it's adjacent to Freedom Elementary. This has potential to impact eight to nine hundred children. As you know, 5500 South is a major access road, it's a state highway. Currently, Freedom Elementary was built in 2004, there is no sidewalk contiguous with that project. We've looked at every avenue, we've been to the school district, we've talked to local, whether it be a co-op with businesses, would they be, you know, in agreement of raising funds for this? So just let you know, thank you if this is placed on the project, just the positive things that this, the commissions and WACOG have the opportunity to, to promote through these transportation funds. So I was pleased to see that this was moved forward in 2018 as a priority. Currently also, there's no busing at this school, and with the development around that property, we just in Hooper City approved approximately two to four hundred housing rooftops in that area, so you can see the impact as development is going in, and the increase in the school, the increase in number of students, and the need for this sidewalk. Currently, there is a, a crosswalk with a crossing guard there to nowhere. It's a forty-foot roadway. Literally, students sometimes jump into the ditch in your sandhooper to get out of the traffic going along there at forty-five, fifty-five miles per hour. So just to give you some insight on some other projects, and thank you for prioritizing this. I just fully support, reiterate Commissioner Harvey's request. The, it's always good to look at data, you know, collection of data on any project, I think that's just good governance. Any, whether it be Hooper City, what we've seen already today, the Parks Board, that's just a good way to proceed. And so I just further support the negotiations with UTA. Obviously, all the mayors are in support of the BRT. It was a very long discussion that night, and it's one that I think continues to need to go forward. So I just completely support the process. So thank you very much.
Lori, can I ask you to stop and visit with Doug Larson? He'll give you all the data, you can stand.
I will. I know him well. Thank you.
Back row. You know there's some eager faces back there.
I know her, can you please ask her?
Just mute the mic. Well, I'm Desiree Hennessy, I'm actually recently moved from Weaver County, and I live in Cache County now, but I had to take this opportunity to come and say thank you to Carrie for his service. I, ever since you made the announcement this morning, I have been getting texts and phone calls and messages, and people are asking what's going on, and Carrie, they love you. But I know this wasn't, nobody ever can have everybody love them, but I know this wasn't an easy decision for you to make, but I also know you, and I know that whenever you make a decision, especially when it comes to your service in the community, that it's not taken lightly. For the last seven years, you've worked in the commission, and before that as a representative, and you have been somebody that the people could look to, and they've trusted you with making decisions for them in this county, and you've not let them down. I know you didn't let us down when we needed you, and I appreciate you for that. As much as we're gonna miss you, and I'm gonna miss seeing you at the Capitol in UAC or wherever else I happen to come across you usually, I, I know that you made this decision, and it's the right decision, and I trust it. And I just, I, I'm excited to see what you do in the Division of Natural Resources, and I know that you will benefit Utah, all of Utah in that arena, and I'm excited to see what you can do for all of us there, so good luck and thank you.
I've got gum. I'm Lindsay Olin, and I'm from Roy. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank Carrie for his service. Every time I have contacted him or asked for some help, some guidance, anything, anything that I've asked, he's been willing to help, and he's so approachable. he's been willing to help, and he's so approachable and kind to the people that he serves and even people that have left the county. And I just appreciate that, especially in a, in a elected official, someone who is willing to serve and just be approachable. And I appreciate all that you've done for us, and I wish you luck on your endeavors.
Can I just quickly respond to that and just say that if there's one thing that I've learned over time in service, it's that sometimes the things that we think matter the most are of the least impact in our lives. And as I look back on some very tender experiences that have been brought to my attention because of these two, it's those opportunities to work with people individually and to be a positive part of their lives that will be what I remember in my time on the commission and in the state legislature. And I am grateful for those because when it comes down to it, projects and buildings and programs come and go, and people. And relationships don't. They're forever. So thank you for reminding me of some of those tender experiences. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone here for public comment? If not, I'm open for a motion to adjourn. It's not your last one, you've got a bunch more, so.
Good that we adjourned.
Okay. I second that, all in favor say aye. Aye, we adjourned. Thank you very much for your attendance today.